On behalf of the League of Women Voters of the Spokane area and Spokane City Cable 5, welcome to our 2019 Primary Election Candidate Forum, featuring candidates for Spokane School District 81 Director, Positions Number 1, 2, and 4. I am Ann Murphy, your moderator, and Bev Austin of the League is our timer. Election Day for the 2019 primary is Tuesday, August 6, 2019. This is a top-two primary in which the two highest vote-getters will advance to the general election in November. In this forum, the candidates will have an opportunity to present themselves to the voters, and the voters will have that opportunity to learn more about each of these candidates, helping them make an informed decision when marking their ballots. The questions I will be asking the candidates have been formulated by the League's Voter Service Committee. Candidates are seated in alphabetical order, and the first speaker will rotate with each question. Candidates will have up to one minute to answer our initial question, and then up to 90 seconds to answer subsequent questions, or whatever time I give you for those questions, with additional time for rebuttal or follow-up as appropriate. Each candidate will have the opportunity for a one-minute closing statement. I will ask as many questions as time allows. Our timer will hold up a yellow card when the speaker has 15 seconds remaining, and then a red card indicates that your time is up. Now, before we proceed, a reminder about voting in the primary. You must be registered in order to vote. You can register online by July 29, up to eight days prior to Election Day. Any mail-in or paper forms must be received in the Elections Office by July 29, and new this year is the same-day voter registration program. During the eight days prior to Election Day, there will be two places where you may register in person at the Spokane County Elections Office, 1033 West Gardner Avenue, or Center Place, 2426 North Discovery Place, Spokane Valley. Hours for those sites that week, Monday through Friday, are 8:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and then they will be open 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Election Day. When you register, you will be provided a ballot for voting. Other voter registration changes effective this summer are automatic voter registration when eligible citizens interact with state agencies, and preregistration that allows 16, 17-year-olds to preregister. Registered voters will receive their mail-in ballots about three weeks prior to Election Day. Ballots must be postmarked or deposited in conveniently-located ballot boxes throughout our county no later than 8:00 p.m. on Election Day, August 6, 2019. Ballots can be dropped off on Election Day at one of the Voter Service Centers. And you can get all these locations by going to the Spokane County Elections Site, www.speccancounty.org/elections. Contact information for the candidates, as well as voter guides, can also be found on that website. Additional information about candidates can be found on the League of Women Voters Site, www.411.org. And now, we meet the candidates for Spokane School District 81 Director, Position 1. This is a nonpartisan race, and all voters within the boundaries of Spokane Schools District Number 81 will select two of these candidates to advance to the general election. Joining us today are Nikki Otero Lockwood, Brian Trimble, and Katie Randall Trelore. Candidates will have up to one minute to answer our first question, and we'll begin with Ms. Lockwood. Why are you running for School Board Director, and what makes you the best candidate? One minute.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm running for the School Board because I believe with this election, there's the opportunity to expand the diversity on the School Board, to more broadly represent our school community. We have a third of our students are students of color, and approximately 20% of our students have disabilities. I've worked, I've volunteered at the classroom level, school committees, district-wide committees, and currently work as an organizer for the ACLU of Washington, bringing families into the discipline reform with the school district. We have many successes there. I believe I'm the best candidate because, besides having board governance experience and policy experience, I have the lived experience as a woman of color, family experience raising a child with autism, and the experience of being a community organizer, working with a broad variety of families. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Trimble.
Hi. My name is Brian Trimble, and I've been in Spokane community for over 20 years. I'm excited about participating in this process, to be able to help with the education system that I foundationally believe is our driving force for our community. I currently, I taught in District 81 for 12 years. I have a master's degree in curriculum design and instruction. I work currently in an early learning center, and I foundationally believe that early intervention is the success for our future educators and our students.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Trelore.
I grew up in Spokane. I attended Spokane Public Schools as a student in elementary school, middle school, and high school. I went to Gonzaga University, where I received my undergraduate degree, my teaching certificate, and my master's in literacy. During that time, I spent countless hours at Sheridan, and Arlington, and Logan with in-service projects. After graduating, I taught in the public school system for eight years. I now have two children attending Spokane Public Schools, and I volunteer for Spokane Public Schools. I also was on the Steering Committee and helped start a nonprofit called At the Core and Bite to Go, which feeds children that are experiencing food insecurity. I've seen our district from many angles. I've seen it as a student myself, as a parent, as an educator, and as a volunteer, and it's given me a unique opportunity to see our district from a system-wide approach. When the board rolls out policy and procedure, my best-of-intentions as a teacher and educator will bring experience to the School Board.
Okay, thank you. So now, we'll get into some questions to expand on all of those things that you've just started with, folks. And so, this is referencing, of course, the article that was in the newspaper recently, reported that the School District 81 will be laying off 41 teachers and 72 classified workers in the coming year, far fewer than announced earlier. And then, instead of a projected budget deficit of $43 million, the district now has a balanced budget. This was accomplished partly through cuts to programs such as arts education and eliminating school librarians, whose duties will be taken on by other teachers. How will quality education be maintained with these changes, and what long-term solutions would you advocate to put the district in a sound financial position? And I'll have 90 seconds, and we'll start with Mr. Trimble.
Thank you. That is, I'm glad to see the budget has been balanced. I'm happy to see that, but I hope it's a long-term goal. I think we need to be very proactive in our planning, but also treating this as a business. I think, as a business owner myself, I realize I own a school, but at the same time, I have to run it as a business first, and remembering that we need to make the priorities of the families that do not get best supported. And I think the challenge that we end up facing at this is that when the budget cuts come, it's normally from services and areas that we need to make sure we continue to support. The places, unfortunately, the most disenfranchised groups of students are the ones that end up failing in this type of situation. So, things that I'd like to put into place is be collaborative, not only with our unions, but also with other School Board members, and listening to our community. We talk a lot about communication and collaboration. We don't take the time to listen to each other and actually look from their expertise that they bring to the table to help us become more successful.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Trelore.
When teachers go to school, they go to school to learn what they are best at, and some teachers are not best at being librarians, and some teachers are not best at being art teachers. And so, it is a disservice to allow this be part of our budget cuts. What we need to do on a local level is send Board members, Spokane Public School administrators, and local politicians over to the state, to the west side, and advocate to redefine what it means to fully educate and fully fund our students. School is so much more than math and reading and writing. There's been a giant shift of responsibility on our schools to provide services such as nurses, counselors, and mental health professionals, and we have to put some of that on the state to fund. Currently, our state is funding five nurses, 58 counselors, and one psychologist, and zero mental health therapists for 31,000 students, and we must require the state to come back and redefine what it means to fully fund education, and what it means to fully fund educating the whole child.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Lockwood.
Could you repeat the question, please?
We reviewed the cuts that had happened, so that we get down to the questions, and the cuts and the balanced budget were achieved by cutting programs such as arts education and the school librarians, whose duties were taken on by other teachers. How will quality education be maintained with these changes, and what long-term solutions would you advocate to put the district in a sound financial position?
Thank you for repeating it. I've been following the budget, and weekly, we get updates, and there'll be even more updates coming, so I will continue to follow the budget evolution as it occurs. I think one thing that we can do for our teachers this year, you know, it's a tragedy to have to not have librarians at school, they're so important, and create equity, I think, in our schoolhouses. One thing that we can do is hold off on curriculum updates where good curriculum currently exists, so we have less of a burden on teachers and what they have to do for professional development. I have advocated at the state level for long-term funding solutions for education, along with the Spokane Alliance. We have an upside-down tax code, so we're not sustainably or equitably funding education, and so I will certainly, if elected, be a champion for that. Right now, the students, working families who get free and reduced lunch pay sometimes up to six times in state and local taxes over the people earning at the top. And when you consider that students that are disciplined are represented, 83% of those students are students that receive free and reduced lunch, so they're not reaping the benefits of those taxes that they're paying disproportionately. So, we need longer-term solutions, the state level.
Okay, thank you. So, sticking with the budget here, in balancing the budget, what criteria would you use to prioritize competing curriculum decisions, especially with regards to academic and non-academic class offerings? And this will be a 60-second answer, and we'll start with Ms. Trelore.
I'm really excited about the new curriculum the district is adopting, the social-emotional learning curriculum. It was piloted and adopted enthusiastically by high school and middle school teachers. It has a two-year implementation process, which is important because our teachers have so much on their plates, that this gives them a chance to really understand the curriculum and roll it out in a positive and successful manner. I agree that in the past, the district has been hasty in adopting curriculum. However, I think we have to look at our current climate and what our schools need, and the social-emotional learning curriculum is very important and relevant to the times.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Lockwood.
I agree with Ms. Trelore. Social-emotional learning is definitely a priority. The reasons that I believe this are that it helps to create safety in our classrooms, and that's something that teachers and students are wanting. It helps improve the school climate. And when kids can have the language to talk about their issues that they're dealing with, actually, we see behaviors go down, and that's really important for the youngest ones, where we see some behaviors that are very disruptive in the classroom. So, it's going to help with the learning of all the students and the teaching. Additionally, besides social-emotional learning, I think it's important to continue with the sex ed, that's what we call the short term, but human growth and development curriculum updates that are happening. We've had three grade levels approved this year, and we hope to continue that for next year for healthy and safe students, give them the tools they need for a healthy and safe future.
Thank you. Mr. Trimble.
I have to agree with both Nikki and Katie on this one, is that the social-emotional needs of our students needs to be met, and the challenge that we face is that we, the academic rigor in our time-bound curriculums is generally priority. And I always argue the fact, I taught kindergarten my first teaching job, and it was one of those environments that I had no idea what I was going to expect, but I remembered one thing, that the kids don't trust and connect with you, then it doesn't matter what pearls of wisdom I might be throwing out to them. But I also taught algebra and geometry at Glover Middle School, and the challenge that I found there is that the fear and phobia of having to adapt to a new curriculum or a new piece of material, that was one of the hardest things that I had to bridge that gap. But they had to trust me first, they had to know that I'm not going to throw them under the bus. But I do believe that we need to invest in that social-emotional connection and build strong relationships with students.
Okay. Our next question will be a 60-second answer, and it will begin with Ms. Lockwood. Through school violence, or though school violence has become a critical issue nationally and locally, the School Board recently declined to decide on whether campus resource officers should be armed, citing the three new members who will be joining the Board after the upcoming election. If you're elected, how would you comment on this issue, and what other steps could the School Board take to keep students safe? Ms. Lockwood?
Yeah, as a leader in the Every Student Council Alliance, in working with the district to reform discipline, student behavior is a big issue, and looking at school policing is another area. So, what safety means and what school violence means is very different, depending on who you're talking to, parents, students of color, student with a disability, a trans student. So, it's really very relative. I support proactive and, like, public health approaches to school safety, like more mental health therapists and social-emotional curriculum, things that improve school climate. I do not support arming of school personnel. It's reactive, there's no evidence to back it up, and there's one more thing about it, that it doesn't address the root causes, like bullying and cyber threats. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Trimble.
I would not vote for arming our security at our schools. I don't know if that believes, actually, I do know. Statistically, does not prove evidence that comes forth saying that if you arm our security personnel at our schools, it's going to make a safer environment. What I am concerned about is that the students in a lower socioeconomic status may be more targeted. I think there's proactive ways, again, I agree with Nikki on this one, where we should not be reactive, we should be proactive. I think there's much more creative ways we can adapt this, and we need to get a sense of community with our students. If they don't feel a sense of belonging, they don't get to participate in the long-term, the participation of their education for themselves, but also the education for everybody else participating at the same school. So, I think we need to get more in-depth with our kids, to get more engaged with our community of the school.
Okay, Ms. Trelore. Spokane Public Schools is an anomaly in the sense that we don't have armed security guards on our campus. Districts like Mead, Central Valley, and Cheney all do have armed security guards. That's not to say that that's the best approach. I think, as new Board members, we need to go, come together in a collaborative approach, discuss this topic with research, and we need to roll, whatever we do decide, we need to roll out in a very proactive manner that involves parents, students, and teachers, so that everybody feels very well communicated to. The Lumen High School is on the, is a charter school that is on the Board agenda for tomorrow night, and I think that's a very good example of fixing the problem at the root. It is a high-quality onsite learning facility that has wraparound programs and will end, help end violence and abuse.
Okay, thank you. Semi-related to this is, according to a semi-annual report the district put together earlier this year, a disproportionate number of minority students in Spokane schools are being disciplined compared to their non-minority peers. What should the district be doing about this? This will be 60 seconds, and we'll start with Mr. Trimble.
Today, I was attending the training over at Gonzaga for circle security, and the opportunity I was learning from this is that, again, we need to connect with our students at a more fundamental level. I think the challenge that we have not, or disenfranchised families are the ones that are not being addressed the most, I don't think we put the resources towards. I think we also need to do a lot more training, not only for our teachers, but giving them the opportunity to reach out to our families and our community members, to be all invested in the final outcome of our students.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Trelore.
Just like we differentiate academics in the classroom, I think we need to differentiate our discipline process and across the district. There can't be a one-size-fits-all discipline practice for 31,000 students. I think it's important that we rely on our highly qualified and highly experienced teachers, staff, and administrators to do what, using restorative practices, de-escalation techniques, behavior interventions, one-on-one counseling, to do what's best for these students in the moment. We need to keep all of our students safe, all of our teachers safe, and all of our administration safe.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Lockwood.
I could talk about this for an hour. It's the work that I've been doing for three years, and I will correct one thing. We look at that data monthly, because the Every Student Council Alliance got the district to agree to do that, and we come together with them every month and work on solutions. So, we have got the restorative practices increased, and we have, you know, encouraged cultural competency, the school district is working on this. And part of the reason that I'm running for School Board is I want these initiatives that have started to really grow and take root and bear fruit. Our numbers have improved. We brought the student arrests down to 10% of what they were before we started with this work three years ago, and it's become a collaborative work with the district, and we've brought in impacted families. So, the work will continue. There's one school that used to be the highest, you know, had high rates of suspensions and expulsions, and they've brought those down to like eight this spring, and they have transformed their schools, so there's some good things happening.
Okay, thank you. We're now going to go to your closing statements in one minute, and we will start with Ms. Trelore.
Thank you so much for having me tonight. My name is Katie Trelore, and I'm running for School Board, Position Number 1. I think it is a disservice to have a School Board without an experienced teacher. I will bring a system-wide approach as a parent, as a teacher, and as a volunteer and community member. I will allow the most, I will give feedback on what most well-intentioned ideas. Hopefully, I can come in and say, you know what, those look really good on paper, but I hope to be able to stop them before they get rolled out and pushed into our classrooms and have positive consequences, or not positive consequences, positive actions.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Lockwood.
As a parent, I want what most parents want, my kids to have a sense of belonging in school and to reach their full potential. Because I have two daughters, one with autism and one without, their experiences have been very different, and so I want to continue to work towards that, those needed improvements. First, as a volunteer, and now as a community organizer, I have brought regular people to the policymaking table and to make equitable change, and I will continue to do that. I will continue to be that bridge with community concerns and solutions that are equity-minded. Please look at my website, nickyforschoolboard.com, if you're interested. I was the first person in my extended Mexican-American family to go to and graduate from college, and I would be honored to be the first elected person from the Latinx community in Spokane serving for the School Board, so the next generation has the opportunity to see leaders that look like them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Trimble.
Well, thank you for having me tonight. I really do appreciate it. This has been a good experience for me, but I couldn't be more pleased about the group of people that are participating in this today. I've met with both of these people individually, and I think I hit my cough button, and, but with that being said, I couldn't be happier about the pool of candidates. My own experience coming into this is about trying to offer something better for the community. I believe foundationally, education is what's making our community better. I think we sometimes forget about how important it is. I don't think school ends when the bell rings. I think at the end of the day, I think we need to be more invested, and our teachers do that right now. They commit to their students, and I think we need to help them and support them. As a teacher myself, for over 17 years, I've been early learning and an advocate for all kids at all levels, not even their, excuse me, from the socioeconomic differences that they may experience. My challenge with that is I want to make sure I have a voice for all families and all kids.
Thank you. Our candidates for Spokane School District 81 Director, Position 1, are Nikki Otero Lockwood, Brian Trimble, and Katie Randall Trelore. Please join me in thanking them for participating in this important election. Next, we meet the candidates for Spokane School District 81 Director, Position 2. This is a nonpartisan race, and all voters within the boundaries of Spokane Schools District 81 will select two of the candidates to advance to the general election. Joining us today are Jenny Slagel and Luke Jasmine III. Also running in this race is Kelly Lynn McFarlane, who is unable to be with us today. Candidates will have up to one minute to answer our first question, and we will give you the signal. You've got the yellow card that will come up when there's 15 seconds left, and then the red card when your time is up. So, our first question that will be one minute, why are you running for District 81 Director, and what makes you the best candidate? And we'll start with you, Ms. Slagel.
Hi. I'm running for School Board because the same social issues that affect our communities are found in our school systems. From racial, socioeconomic disparities that prevent students from succeeding in school can be found in society, and I believe school systems are where we need to start that reform to make things better. I know this because I've experienced it. I'm a public school product, and I grew up on the Akuma Reservation. I'm a first-generation college graduate, and I will start a master's program in the fall. I raised four great young adults here in Spokane, in the school district, all graduating at Ferris High School. I believe I would make a great School Board member because I have empathy and insight.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jasmine.
Yeah, I'm running for Position 2 School Board because I feel a deep sense of responsibility. I have the lived experience as being a person of color, as learning English as my third language, as also learning how to break through a cycle of poverty. And with that lived experience, and also with what the work that I'm doing in the community, which is advocating on a state level for children and families, for just really bringing that perspective to the School Board, I think that it's been missing. And all that varied experience, I think I'd be the best candidate to fill.
Okay, thank you. We're going to proceed into some questions now, and some of them will be 90 seconds, some will be 60. I'll let you know, and Bev will give you the card colors. All right. "As of last week, the spokesman review reported that the school district will be laying off 41 teachers and 72 classified workers in the coming year, far fewer than had been announced earlier, and that instead of projected budget deficit of $43 million, the district now has a balanced budget. This was accomplished partly through cuts to programs such as arts education and eliminating school librarians, whose duties will be taken on by other teachers. How will the quality of education be maintained with these changes, and what long-term solutions would you, as a director, advocate for to put the district in a sound financial position?" 90 seconds, Mr. Jasmine.
So, I think there are a lot of things that the school district is doing and can continue to do. One of the things that I would love to see is a bridge built between early childhood education and the K-12 system. We have about 65% of kids of color coming unprepared to our school district, and every single year afterwards, we are seeing some of learning loss. Kids are going back two months behind where they need to be, and I think that's what's really causing a lot of our issues in the classroom, behavior-wise. So, and I also think really working together, continuing to collaborate. We have legislators that I think we need to continue to put the pressure to fund basic education. Realistically, the state should be funding and paying for our teacher salaries, and the local money. I think the community would like to see that go into the arts, and that's one of the things that I would love to see, and we'll push to support.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Slagel.
I was disappointed by the layoff of all the librarians. Like many that I've talked to, my first learning experience was in the library. I think that's going to make our teachers stretch a little bit more, unfortunately. I think that the Board should focus on their, they've been able to- I think that the board should focus on their, they've been able to balance this year, but we should continue to look ahead into future years to make sure that no other cuts or will negatively affect the school system. I think we should keep advocating for the state to fully fund our education system. And I'm sorry, what was the second half of your question?
Well, the second part is to put the district in a sound financial position.
Yeah, so exactly that was just to keep looking ahead and be even more strategic in the years to come.
Okay, thank you. So, keeping with the money theme, since that's always the issue, in balancing the budget, what criteria would you use to prioritize competing curriculum decisions, especially with regards to academic and non-academic class offerings? Ms. Slagel.
I am really encouraged by the work that the school district has done with the cultural competency program that they have put in place the last few years. I think what they should focus on in the coming couple of years as they're rolling out the social-emotional learning is to build a solid foundation of cultural competency, get that in place, and bring on the social-emotional learning to, as a strong layering for that to support our students and their mental health needs.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jasmine.
Yeah, I, you know, my thoughts kind of resemble the previous candidates. We really need to focus on just early intervention and prevention. I think what we're seeing in our schools are teachers who have classrooms with a lot of students, and a lot of those students don't have their social-emotional needs met or just even their basic needs met. And I think once we address those issues, then we will start seeing teachers able to, be able to help the students continue to grow and be engaged with school.
Thank you. Though school violence has become a critical issue nationally and locally, the school board recently declined to decide on whether campus resource officers should be armed, citing that the three new school board members who will be joining this after the upcoming election need to be part of that decision. If you are elected, how would you vote on this issue? And what other steps could the school board take to keep students safe? And we'll start with you, Mr. Jasmine, sixty seconds.
Yeah, and this is one of the major issues that I think my experience and my perspective would be great for. Are we listening to the community? Are we listening to what the community is saying? And to answer the question, would I vote for this? Absolutely not. I think there are other ways to be able to look at violence. And like Nikki said prior to us, we need to look at the mental health. We, they, the previous, sorry, the previous person mentioned the fact that we don't have enough supports for the children in the classrooms. And I think once we're able to really look at prevention and really work with the kids, the whole mental health piece, we'll be able to solve a lot of the issues that we're seeing.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Slagel.
I also do not support the arming of school resource officers. I think there's a lot that we can do to help support our students and make our schools safer. I, especially with the, these budget, ongoing budget issues that will definitely cover, carry over into future budget years. We don't have the funding right now to support additional training, equipment, insurance costs within our budget. And I'd rather see that type of funding go towards the, these very specific curriculum that support mental health needs, like the multi-tiered support systems and the social-emotional learning.
Okay, thank you. Recently, at the federal level, the Secretary of Agriculture relaxed the nutrition standards for school meals. What is your position on this issue? And how should our school district respond? Ms. Slagel.
I think the school district should continue to be a leader in providing fruits and vegetables, whole grains, reducing sodium in our lunches. As a working parent, I depended on my students getting lunches at school, and I just applaud their program that they have in, for nutritious, healthy lunches. To, I think reducing childhood obesity should continue to be a focus of our school district.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jasmine.
Yeah, it's no secret that the children farthest from opportunity would be the ones affected if we didn't make sure that the meals that they were getting, which a lot of them, that's where, that's the only place that they're getting the meals. I think just like Jenny mentioned, we really do need to make sure that we are staying ahead of the curve, even though the regulations may be lax. That doesn't mean that we are not supposed to look at the general welfare of our kids and make sure that's in the forefront of what we're doing.
Okay, thank you. And our last question before we go to closing statements deals with the semi-annual report that the district put together earlier this year. A disproportionate number of minority students in Spokane schools are being disciplined compared to their non-minority peers. What should the district be doing about this? And we'll start with you, Mr. Jasmine.
Yeah, so like I mentioned, I have lived experience as being a person of color and also being a first-generation Haitian-American. So just my experience in school, I did get in trouble a lot. And I think, like we heard Mr. Trimble say, we really need to, I think, focus on relationships, making sure that the children feel loved and they feel accepted as soon as they come through the doors. And I think when the students feel a sense of belonging, they will, sorry, I lost what I was saying. You know, I was looking in the crowd and looking at everybody, but, but what was the, I'm sorry, what was the question?
Well, we're dealing with, what should the district be doing about?
Yeah, oh, sorry. Okay. I just think we just need to really look at the kids, ask the kids what they're looking for, and figure out ways to help with belonging. Thank you.
Ms. Slagel.
I think we definitely need to keep focusing on restorative practices. I think the curriculum coming up, not that social-emotional learning is going to be an end-all, is going to solve all the solutions, but I think that will complement the cultural competency training that the, all the administrators and staff are going through. Once that lays the solid foundation, I think the policies and keeping, look, keeping a focus on data, those monthly reports, working with our community partners, trying to find these solutions, I think is definitely going to help address these disproportionate rates of isolation.
Okay, thank you. And now we'll go to your one-minute closing, and we'll start with you, Ms. Slagel.
I just want to thank the League of Women Voters Spokane for this event tonight, and I appreciate all the support that I've had up to this point. I look forward to representing the school board. I believe that I have a bring diverse voice and represent the tribal communities that we have here in the region very well. I would be the first female Native American board member elected to the school board, and I take that response, the responsibility very, very seriously. And I just look forward to continue having discussions with great candidates such as Luke and other board seat positions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jasmine.
Thank you for having me here, League of Women Voters. And I have a deep passion for our community and for our kids. I know for myself, as a person of color, I've had a lot of people there supporting me and cheering me on and encouraging me, and that's why I'm here today. And knowing what I do in the community right now, running a high-quality early learning facility, partnering with Lumen High School, which is the charter school for pregnant teens, providing childcare for them, advocating on a statewide level with, and developing relationships with key legislators, I do believe I have the passion and the skills and the experience to represent our district well. Thank you.
And thank you. Our candidates for position number two, Spokane School District Director, are Jenny Slagel and Luke Jasmine III. Also running is Kelly Lynn McFarland, who was unable to be, join us today. Please, in the audience, join me in thanking these candidates for being here. And finally, we meet the candidates for Spokane School District 81 Director, position four. This is a nonpartisan race, and all voters within the boundaries of Spokane School District 81 will select two of these candidates to advance to the general election. Our candidates today are Bill Baxley, Erin Georgian, and Kevin Morrison. Candidates will have up to one minute to answer our first question. And we'll begin with you, Mr. Baxley. Why are you running for District 81 Director? And what makes you the best candidate?
Well, you know, it's moments like these, and I'm actually wondering that myself. But despite, all levity aside, I'm running because I've had a lot of experience, over thirty years of classroom experience, mostly with at-risk and adjudicated populations. Ten of those years were abroad in the Republic of South Africa. I was born here and attended school, public schools, as well as private school. I went west to attend college and never really came back for forty-three years. I returned in 2015, and the usual reasons I will give, that most people, you know, give back to the community, lend the experiences that I've had, et cetera. So thank you for the opportunity, and that's it.
Okay. Ms. Georgian.
I am running for, oh, I apologize. I am running for school board because I am a working parent who grew up here in this community. So my daughter's in the school system, and I also was in the school system for a little while. The other reason that I'm running is that while I've always kind of been passionate about serving my community, I've seen just how important the school system is to working families. My daughter struggled for quite a while in the first two years of her school, and it wasn't until we had Behavioral Intervention Services that I was able to finally get back to being a functional, working parent again. So I would like to make sure those resources are available sooner to more students at their home schools.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Morrison.
Thank you very much for this opportunity and for the work the League of Women Voters does in informing us about these issues. I think I am a second-generation Spokaneite. My mother went to Rogers High School, my father went to Lewis and Clark. I was born and raised here. I have lived here pretty much, with the exception of a few years where I lived in Boise my entire life. We grew up in the Audubon neighborhood. My parents were working class, and they taught us early on, education, education, education. I took that to heart, but I was a late bloomer in that I started working for the district fifteen years ago. And in that time, I've spent seven of those years on the leadership team, on the superintendent's cabinet, and I saw a void that's happening this November with over twenty years of institutional experience leaving, and I felt it my duty to carry on.
Okay, thank you. So now we'll take a look at what's been happening in our school district. As the spokesman reported this last week, School District 81 will be laying off forty-one teachers and seventy-two classified workers for the coming year, far fewer than were announced earlier. And that instead of a projected budget deficit of forty-three million, the district now has a balanced budget. This was accomplished partly through cuts to programs such as arts education and eliminating school librarians. Those duties were taken on by other teachers. How will quality education be maintained with these changes? And what long-term solutions would you advocate to put the district in a sound financial position? This will be ninety seconds, and we'll start with you, Ms. Georgian.
Yeah, the budget was a bit of a challenge this year, and it was kind of a roller coaster. How we move forward is kind of how they got here, which is a lot of really amazing people that work for the school district worked really, really hard to cut as little as possible and to find the best path forward. But what we really need to think about long-term is advocating at the state level for a more comprehensive decision, definition of what fully funded means. And we need to ask ourselves as a community whether we want smaller classroom sizes at the high school level, whether we want librarians in lieu of state funding. So I believe that Spokane does support the teachers' raises and would support smaller classroom sizes, and I would be open to making sure they have an opportunity to vote on that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Morrison.
Well, I was privileged and honored to be in most of those meetings in the cabinet when those hard decisions were being made. And it took place over several months, and none of them were easy. Week after week, position by position, looking through them, and you do everything you can with the goal of keeping it as far away from the classroom, as far as ways from delivery of services that you possibly can. I think in the long term, we definitely have to look at some additional funding. There is no, two ways about it. The legislature stepped up to the plate, but they were forced to through McCleary. They were forced to about eight years ago. And we're now, in 2019, moving into 2020, and the eight-year-go formula isn't going to work. So I strongly suggest we advocate for additional special education funding. That ratio is completely antiquated. I think the methodology maybe even used is antiquated and needs to be looked at. So I would be, I'm all for going to legislature, talking to Andy and Tim and Marcus and the rest of the legislature, and advocating strongly for additional special education funding to help balance the budget.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Baxley.
You'll have to re-brief me on exactly.
Re-brief you, okay. The newspaper reported fewer layoffs than had been anticipated and that there was now a balanced budget. But it was accomplished partly through cuts to programs such as arts education and eliminating school librarians. How will quality education be maintained with these changes? And what long-term solutions would you advocate to put the district in a sound financial position?
Well, to maintain programs that are being cut, particularly in the arts, I would have to start looking at the potential of getting some of the excellent artists in the area, first of all, aware of this problem, and secondly, possibly being willing to come in and, you know, lend their expertise and hold some workshops for the kids so that they can continue with these types of programs. The library thing is tough, but, you know, when you've got tough situations, you need to look at solutions, such as perhaps having some roving librarians. I went to a very small school that didn't have a full-time librarian, but the city brought one up about two times, three times a month, and we made it get by. The long-term deal is basically, it's a state-funded issue, but you might have to start looking at local businesses to try to maybe start stepping up with suggestions, like perhaps they could sponsor football teams, and some of that money could be, you know, diverted over into the music programs. And, you know, ideas like that, which I would be open to, and listen and see what can be done. Sometimes the legalities of these situations are such that you are, your hands are tied. I've been in situations where there was money available, but it had to go to a certain thing, you know, and so.
Okay, thank you. So in balancing the budget, what criteria would you use to prioritize competing curriculum decisions, especially with regards to academic and non-academic class offerings? And this will be sixty seconds, and we'll start with you, Mr. Morrison.
Well, those are decisions that I have witnessed over the past seven years on the cabinet. On how those decisions are made is... cabinet. On how those decisions are made is difficult. What you have to do is start balancing things like the number of students that may partake in those courses. Do you offer Japanese? Do you offer Chinese? Do you offer German and French? Or do you have cutback because the number of students enrolled in those? I think you have to look at what the actual skills needed are in the local and regional and national economies, and you have to balance those within it as well. We have a wonderful curriculum development team, a wonderful CTE, Career Technical Education, team in the district, and they monitor those things quite closely. And I think that those hard decisions are what being a board member's about.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Baxley?
Once again, please repeat the question.
In balancing the budget, what criteria would you use to prioritize the competing curriculum decisions, especially with regards to academic and non-academic class offerings?
Competing curricular decisions? You know, I'm a little hazy on what you're trying to ask me.
Well, when they have new curriculum to adopt, and maybe there's more than one on the table, and so then they would compete, and how, what criteria would go into a curriculum that would get adopted?
Well, I'd look at the past and see what numbers of students are taking what subjects and what they're interested in, and what their parents are interested in. I would try to provide the subject matter with competent people instructing in those areas that basically are being most utilized by the student populations, and then tear it down from there. In the previous panels, they talked a lot about this socio-behavioral economic, or not economic, but these models versus sort of, it sounded to me like academics. And I don't know that you have to actually make trade-offs on that. I would think that those types of programs, if you begin them young, you can, you know, wean students away from that as they become older, although, Lord knows, the junior high years are problematic. But the bottom line is, is as you start to become junior and seniors, you're probably going to spend less time trying to figure out who you are, et cetera, and more on your AP Biology, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Georgian?
Yes, actually, an article in the newspaper today brings up an example of where I think some creative thinking could be used to create some more dynamic classes. Right now, students in the lower levels are being, the schools are choosing between extra science and extra art time. I find that really fascinating because I am a lover both art and science, and I spent most of my education getting as much of those two things as possible. My A&amp;P class was an art class, and I find it, sound is a physics, happens when sound is created. So, I would love to see, maybe we can come up with some creative ways in which students can get more project-based education that combines different fields, history and art, or art and sciences.
Okay, great, thank you. School violence. It has become a critical issue nationally and locally. The school board recently declined to decide on whether campus resource officers should be armed, citing that the three new members, one of one will be you. Who will be joining the board after the upcoming election? If you are elected, how would you vote on this issue, and what other steps could the school board take to make sure students are safe? And we will begin with you, Mr. Baxley.
Well, when it comes to school safety, I would say everything is on the table. I am not really aware of whether or not every school in the Spokane district has a resource officer currently employed there. I would tend to think that they might not. I'm also not sure if the Spokane School District has ever actually done a security assessment by a professional company to find out where their leaks might be or their soft points. I think creating soft targets with gun-free zones, et cetera, et cetera, gets away from the notion of deterrence, which is what it's all about. There can be nothing more important than knowing, or at least sensing, feeling that when your kid goes off to school, that they're going to come back. So, I would say everything's on the table, including a look at like school marshal programs, et cetera, et cetera. So, I would probably vote to arm resource officers.
Okay, Ms. Georgian?
Yes. The answer to arming officer, like arming anyone in the school is particularly concerning to me. I would not be supportive of that. There's no evidence that that makes schools safer. In fact, there's some evidence that it actually causes escalation with students because the students feel less safe in that environment. What I would be in favor of, and I actually think is important that we start doing right away in schools that have higher rates of aggression or violence among the students. Every year, I have to get trained in management of aggressive behavior in order to perform my job with brain-injured patients who sometimes become aggressive as a result of their injury. We learn how to recognize the early signs of aggressive behavior and irritability. We learn how to de-escalate those techniques, and we learn how to defend ourselves if that ever becomes a problem. I've never had to defend myself with a patient, but I have had to take control of the situation. And I think our teachers, particularly in more stressful schools, should be, are given that same education.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison?
This is an issue that is near and dear to me. In November, I was asked by the superintendent to come back into the district and be the interim administrator of safety, security, and risk management for the district, post I've held up until this coming Friday. We did a comprehensive safety audit over the past year from a nationally-recognized firm. I don't think the question is, do we arm officers? I think the question that we need to ask our community and ourselves, our staff members and community, is what does a response look like, and a dedicated individual, highly trained, to be able to come into one of our situations, into our schools? We're not talking about school behaviors. We're talking about non-custodial parents. We're talking about people who come off and into the district. So, it's an open conversation with the community.
Okay, I sense each of you maybe had a little bit more to say on that. I'd like to give you each about 30 more seconds. Mr. Baxley?
Well, it's a very serious issue, and there's no happy answer. But I subscribe to the concept that it's better to have one and not need it than need it and not have it.
Okay, Ms. Georgian?
I guess just to add to that, we also do training to, the idea could be a patient. Hospitals like schools have become a target for people who have decided to shoot things. So, we have that training not only to know how to deal with a patient, but also if we were to have someone coming off the street. So, the de-escalation techniques work regardless of whether your impulse control is going or not. They're effective techniques.
Okay, Mr. Morrison?
Yeah, thank you for the additional time on this very sensitive topic. I think that we want to take a look at what's response time going to be when a situation goes south, and do we have a dedicated law enforcement officer specifically for our school district and not one for the general public that just can go anywhere, answer to the call if need be. It's a broad question. I think the Safe Havens audit that we just performed came up with several different models that would be very palatable to most individuals in our city.
Okay, thank you. Now, we'll move on and talk about the semi-annual report that the district put together earlier this year, which found that a disproportionate number of minority students in Spokane schools are being disciplined compared to their non-minority peers. So, what should the school district be doing about this? And we'll start with you, Ms. Georgian.
Yes.
60 seconds.
Okay, well, one of the things I'd like to point out is that our minority students are also disproportionately crammed into about three or four schools through the district. So, I would suggest that we start by implementing behavioral intervention and adding extra staffing resources to those schools so that they can adequately deal with the higher levels of trauma which are common in those communities.
Okay, Mr. Morrison?
There are formulas that we have in the staffing models, and I think that there is, the behavior issues are number one. If we ask any staff members, in probably about 70% of our schools, behavior issues that they're seeing like never before. If we ask our bus drivers, they are also seeing them. We have students 15% of a day in the course of the hours of a year. We need additional resources, and I think through our partnerships with Spokane Regional Health, through United Way, through Empire Health Foundation, we've looked at, reached out for additional partners, and we're finding them. And I think we need to work harder in those areas to help support our students and staff who are in need with these behavior issues early on.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Baxley?
Well, I recently was vetted by the Spokane Education Association, and the concept, the idea of discipline was their biggest issue. So, obviously, there's something going on that seems fairly, probably in the last, maybe five years, new to these teachers that they haven't seen before. So, a couple of things occurred to me. One of them is that you might start trying to figure out, well, why is this disproportionality existing? What's going on? You might want to take a look at creating a database, because my experience has been that it was generally the same, you know, two or three repeatedly that then stir and can manipulate, et cetera, et cetera. But I would start to take a look and see and track these behaviors. I would also try to set up immediacy, so teachers don't have to deal with it, and probably put some TV cameras in classrooms so that when incidents occur, you can go back and see what actually happened.
Okay, thank you. Recently, at the federal level, the Secretary of Agriculture relaxed the nutrition standards for school meals. What would be your position on this issue, and how should our school district respond? We'll start with you, Mr. Morrison, 60 seconds.
Well, I'll tell you, Doug Wardell at the Nutrition Services has been with the district for well over 15 years, been there as long as I've been with the district. Scratch Cooking is near and dear to his heart, a program that he helped initiate and grow across the district. I think we do not relax any of those health standards that have been set up by previous administrations at the federal level. I took a look at the nutrition, the number of meals served. They have not gone down since we have initiated that. They have remained the same. Our food service people deliver over 4 million meals a year to our students, and those numbers haven't changed. If anything, they've gone up. And I think it's non-changing, those behaviors, cutting down on the processed foods is what we've been doing with Whole Foods, local growers, as much as possible. And I applaud Doug Wardell and his efforts in our Nutrition Services Department.
Thank you. Mr. Baxley?
Well, it, repeat the question for me again, please, so I can get a sense of...
What is your position on the issue related to the Secretary of Agriculture relaxing nutrition standards for school meals, and how should the district respond?
Well, if the nutrition standards have been relaxed to the point where some, you know, professionals believe that it's going to be a detriment to the educational process, then I would say that the school food providers need to step in and supplement to bring the standards back up to what they consider to be the nutritional optimum situation. But in addition to this, I do believe that, you know, if you feed them, they will come. How much are we, when I worked in some of the poorest and roughest of LA County, they didn't eat the food that was brought. And when I tried to give it to charitable institutions, I was told I could be arrested for doing that. So, I mean, at a certain point in time, I just wonder if, you know, a family can't get together in the morning and, you know, sort of have a group make lunch kind of deal if you don't like what's being served, et cetera. So, I'm a little, I'd have to educate myself a little bit on this and come back to you.
Okay, Ms. Georgian?
As a single mother in this district, and especially the first couple of years of school, struggling to maintain full-time employment with my daughter's difficulties, I got to say that the nutritional program the schools are doing is excellent. I want it to be more available. I'm proud of what they're doing with the summer lunch programs. The food that was sent home on Friday was helpful, every ounce of it. I didn't worry about my daughter having the lunches at school because I knew they were healthy. When I was growing up and I had to have the free lunches at school, they were not healthy. When I had the free breakfast at school, I remembered not even wanting to touch it. My daughter loves the food there, and I'm really proud that Spokane has made such a big leap.
Okay, thank you. And now, we're going to move to your closing statements. You each have up to one minute to share final thoughts with us, and we will start with Mr. Baxley.
Final thoughts? Well, I like, I have over 30 years of experience. I have teaching credentials from both the state of Washington and California. I am housed as highly qualified in nine subjects. I have taught overseas for over 10 years. I have taught learning-disabled students, at-risk students, adjudicated students. And, you know, it just seems like I might be, I feel that I'm level-headed, have some common sense, am open to listen to, you know, both sides. I'm unaffiliated with any political party. And this is my first step into this realm, and I would appreciate your support. And I want to thank you for, and the League of Women Voters and the audience for their time and interest, and hopefully, we'll see what happens.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Georgian?
I apologize. I just had a, can you just repeat? I know it's just the wrap-up.
It's just your closing statement.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, so, as a closing statement, I have spent my life growing up here, and I am ready to give back to Spokane in a way that I haven't before. I think that I could be a voice for working families across the district. As a small business owner, I also know what business owners are facing as far as getting their employees to work when they have to go and deal with family issues. That could have maybe been prevented by adequate staffing at the schools or adequate resources at the schools. It could make it really challenging. So, I'd like to serve all of Spokane by serving its students.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison?
Well, thank you again for inviting me, and thank you to the audience, remaining audience members, for being here. In November, you're going to have a choice to make, and it's going to be whether or not we have the possibility of losing 20 years of institutional knowledge. There are over 185 school board policies. We update about 25 or 30 of them every year. They are paragraphs and paragraphs, sometime of minutia, that need to be looked at overall by the board. I'm proud of the work I've done with Spokane Public Schools of past 15 years. We've got increased number of smaller alternative learning programs, major modernization of almost 80% of the district. We brought Montessor, we have its own central location. We've opened the NCIST. We've opened Spanish Immersion. We've initiated the Threat Assessment Model, and most of all, our graduate rates have risen from 70 to almost 90% in that 15 years. I'd be pleased to be your candidate.
Thank you. And our candidates again are Bill Baxley, Erin Georgian, and Kevin Morrison. Please join me in thanking these individuals for running for school board.[1703.88][1703.88][applause] This concludes our primary election candidate forum for candidates running for Spokane School District 81. We heard from candidates in position one, two, and four. In case you joined us after the broadcast of this program began, here is a reminder about voting in the primary. You must be registered. You can accomplish that by registering online by July 29th, or you can mail in or make sure your paper forms are received in the elections office by July 29th. New this year is the Same-Day Voter Registration Program. During the eight days prior to the election day, there will be two places where you may register in person. One at the Spokane County Elections Office, 1033 West Gardner, or Center Place, 2426 North Discovery Place, Spokane Valley. Hours are Monday through Friday, 8:30 a.m. to 4 p.m., and then on Election Day, these sites will be open from 7 a.m. to 8 p.m. When you register at that site, you will be provided a ballot for voting. Other voter registration changes effective this summer are automatic voter registration and pre-registration for our 16, 17-year-olds, who will then automatically become registered when they turn 18. Registered voters will receive their mail-in ballots about three weeks prior to Election Day. Ballots must be postmarked or deposited in one of the many... Ballots must be postmarked or deposited in one of the many conveniently located ballot boxes throughout our county, no later than 8:00 p.m. on Election Day, August 6, 2019. Ballots can also be dropped off at those same Election Day Voter Service Centers, and locations for those and all of the boxes can be found at Spokane County Elections Office, Contact information for all the candidates, as well as voter's guides, can be found on the website of Spokane County Elections Office. Additional information about the candidates can be found on the League of Women Voters' online voter guide, vote411.org. The League of Women Voters of the Spokane area is a nonpartisan political organization encouraging informed and active participation in government, influencing public policy through education and advocacy. We invite you to visit our website, lwspokane.org, for more information. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of the Spokane area, thank you to all of the candidates for their participation in this forum, and thank you to our viewing audience for the willingness to learn more about the candidates and their issues. We hope that this forum has helped you in making an informed decision when you cast your ballot by Tuesday, August 6, 2019. Thank you for joining us.